And at this point, I'd like to hand it over to Chancellor Nassi for the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Appreciate all the board members being here on a Monday evening. So appreciate your time. So thank you for joining us. Tonight's discussion, I think, is an important one, and it really goes to how we support student success. You know, this year's mantra is adapt and advance together for students, and it's really about a commitment to continuous improvement across our organization. So tonight, there's two big things we'll be talking about. One is how we invest in our people at Pima Community College through professional development, and then how we evaluate performance in a way that is meaningful, in a way that is consistent and aligned with our priorities as an institution. And so that is what our lead in human resources, Tina Neal, will be talking with us about this evening. And feel free always, right, this is a study session, so I'll interrupt, you know, if we have questions or need for clarification. And I, of course, encourage the board to actively participate in the discussion throughout. And I believe Tina's probably built that into the discussion and presentation. Tina?
Good evening, Board Vice Chair, Board Members, Chancellor, and colleagues here and online. I am Tina Neal. I am the Assistant Vice Chancellor of Human Resources. I've also brought two of my directors here today because this presentation combines two of their areas, and I want to make sure you visually kind of know who they are and also know the areas. So I'm going to bring up Joey Spray first. She's our Director of Organizational Effectiveness and Development. She's been here for two months, but she has a lot of great experience.
Hello, and thank you for having me here and welcoming me to Pima Community College. I am pretty new here, but not new to the training world. I have a large or long background in learning and technology. So I'm happy to bring those skills here and already jumping into things like getting ready for college-directed training next year and implementing a new learning management system. And one of the things that I'm really looking forward to is making sure that our training matches the upcoming mission and chancellor's goals. So that's my directive coming up here.
Okay, and then I'll bring up Janet Rico-Yurig. She's our Director of Human Resources.
Thank you, Tina. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to be here today to talk with you about professional development and performance management. My name is Janet Rico-Yurig, and I serve the college, I have served the college for the past two and a half years as the Director overseeing the areas of talent management, talent acquisition, and employee relations. My, gosh, tenure in human resources has been long. Served as for a couple of organizations in town and grew up in Tucson myself. Did my undergraduate degree at the University of Arizona and my master's at Northern Arizona University. Was a Pima student myself once upon a time ago, and excited to be here and answer any questions that you have. Thanks, Tina.
You're taller than me. I have to go back down. Okay, so what I wanted to talk to you about tonight was professional development, performance management, which I'll explain in a minute, all the different parts of performance management, and then specifically get a little bit more into performance reviews or evaluations. We sometimes use the word interchangeably, but that's, you know, if somebody says, hey, do you do performance evaluations? We call them performance reviews here. And then I want to talk to you about the future of where we're going. We have a new system that we're implementing. We're going to talk to you about 360 feedback. I know that's one of the favorite questions that's asked about a lot of people. And then we're going to have a new process in the upcoming fiscal year. Okay, so first, we're going to look at this professional development snapshot of what we offer at the college, what we have. And as the chancellor said, at any point, you can pause me and I will answer questions. So within our policy, within our staff and faculty, we have a professional development policy. This is the beginning of that policy statement, that we do have a purpose for professional development, and that is to equip our employees with the necessary skills to get high performance. And the college offers four areas of professional development. Joey talked about college-directed training, so this is the less fun stuff, but this is the stuff that keeps us in business. This is the compliance, right? This is your FERPA training. This is your OSHA training. This is, you know, the sexual harassment training. This is the stuff we have to do to make sure that people are following the laws. Then we have job-specific training. Those folks that actually work in our labs, right, they have to have like certain chemical management training. Other specific areas around the college, right? So some of our facilities need to have like golf cart training or ladder safety training. And so we're able to offer those specific ones based on the job. Then we offer career enhancement training. So this would be like to go above and beyond if somebody wants to move on to another job. We have a lot of training in IT within our system that I'll show you soon so that people can kind of move up and onward if they want to get certain IT certifications. The same thing, our Teaching and Learning Center offers teaching workshops to help, you know, our instructors and our faculty become better. So we offer lots in that area, and I'll go into it more. And then the fourth area is educational enrichment. So we are a community college. We offer courses, right? So you can get a certificate right here, right? Or, you know, we will, we have some partnerships with, like, the University of Arizona Online offers a 10% discount for our employees if they want to take UA online courses. So this, you know, and then for staff, we do offer some, sometimes we offer time off if they're finishing up their masters, right? We will continue to pay them for that additional semester that they're trying to finish up their masters as well as other areas. So these are the four areas that we're trying to support. Like I said, some, we absolutely have to do to keep the college open, and other ones, we want our workforce to continue to develop along the way. So college-directed training, like I said, is this compliance and safety training. So this is for all employees. This is part-time and full-time. We do it as self-paced online modules. For new employees, it's due within 30 days from hire. We send it out to them. It's about three hours of online trainings, and we're constantly updating based on the laws that are changing or the compliance needs. And then for current employees, what Joey's talking about, that we're working on right now, is that we do refresher every two years. There are certain compliances out there, like FERPA or Title IX, that require constant refreshers, as well as laws are constantly changing. Or even, we have partnerships around the college, so you'll get those text messages where it says "shelter in place." That is new terminology. We're going to be adding a training in this year to help all college employees understand the difference between lockdown and shelter in place. So we also work with different groups around the college to make sure our employees kind of have the most up-to-date information on key safety things or compliance areas. And the one that comes out every two years, we try to keep it down to like about an hour and a half because, again, we want, we want people to be able to do it. When I first got here six years ago, this was like 18 hours of training. The completion rate was like 10%. That's not good for compliance, right? It needs to be just in time. It needs to be completed, and it needs to be digestible.
And you give employees, as a fairly new employee myself, you give employees a certain amount of time. What happens, Tina? Like, if someone comes to and doesn't finish it, they can't start their job? I mean, what does that look like?
So it's 30 days from the hire, right? So a new employee comes in, they learn about it at new employee orientation. Then we do continuous follow-up with them, honestly, until they do it. And then if they don't do it, we have a performance management problem, right? We have to then work with them, then Janet's team and Employee Relations will work with them and talk about how they're not meeting a requirement. Coach them, see if there's some sort of barrier in their way, right? Maybe, maybe there's something, maybe they got stuck on a training, maybe the system had an error, or maybe they just forgot and they need a reminder. But yes, they have to complete it. We actually don't have employees that don't complete. We make sure they get it done because it's that important. So in our system, like, this is an example, so you can see FERPA and Title IX, right? They'll get, and I'll show you our system in a little while, but it will give them all of these courses, and then you just go through them one at a time and complete ones of like FERPA's 27 minutes, Title IX is another, like, 23 or 30 minutes. And they're going through, so they also don't have to do it all in one sitting. They can be like, oh, my gosh, I have 20 minutes between a meeting. Let me get my FERPA training done. And then there'll be, a lot of them have like quizzes along the way to like, you know, make sure they're knowing the content. So the other piece, when we're talking about other training that we offer, we offer instructor-led training here at the college, and there's four different groups on, at the college that offer these. So one of them is organizational effectiveness and development that sits within HR, otherwise known as OED. We tend to do topics on supervision, leadership. We'll go out to a group also and do like team development. So we've done it for like financially, we've gone in, we've helped them out with like, you know, like I said, team development. We run a workshop down here at the bottom. We run a series every year called Supervision in the 21st Century. It's actually a five-month leadership development program. It has a Crucial Conversation Certificate with it. It has personalized coaching, and it has all these leadership courses that go with it. And any employee at the college can actually sign up for this, and it's fully paid for by the college. And then, like I said, we either do on-request trainings or we run other leadership and supervisor trainings.
Vice Chair Morales, is the, are, so for this section, it's only offered for employees? Or are these also like for-credit classes that students also can take?
These are just for employees. Good question. The Teaching and Learning Center, which is run under our academic area, right, is more focused on faculty development, but also doing, right, those trainings for leadership in the classroom, team development. We also work alongside with them to make sure like college-directed training is done or if any training topic comes up that we need to kind of co-work together on. Our Human Resources Employee Relations Team runs workshops on coaching, performance management. These are very highly attended by our supervisors here because once they have to start coaching, they're like, I don't know what to do. And our Employee Relations Team really walks them through lots of different examples. And then our Environmental Health and Safety Team runs a lot of in-person trainings on safety for departments and employees. So some of those ones, like about fire safety management, other, they'll do some of those concepts in person because they're not, they're not good online.
Tina, I have a quick question.
Yes.
How often are these led, instructor-led trainings updated? Or how up-to-date are these? Like, how often do you add programming or remove programming?
I would say regularly, right? So the Human Resources Employee Relations ones, I know that they're like retooling them almost every year. As different circumstances come up, they're like, ooh, we didn't talk about this before. We should, we should really add this piece into coaching. The Supervision in the 21st Century Program, it's a once-a-year, like cohort-based program. We look at the curriculum every year before we start rerunning it again, as well as any of these other topics. The Teaching and Learning Center is constantly offering new topics, and then, again, retooling whatever they might regularly offer.
Do any of these trainings include any, any training on cultural awareness, diversity, equity, and inclusion, unconscious bias, anything like that?
So, yes, many of them do, and those are some of the ones that we're currently retooling, right? So then we can, we can offer them because there's been changes, right? And we have to, we have to look at those. But Unconscious Bias is an online course that we have that actually all search committee members are required to do. As well as, as we develop a Supervisor Academy, we're going to be adding those pieces in, which I'll talk about in a minute. But yes, that's one of the reasons, we can't, we just can't pull something off the shelf and keep doing it.
Right, I appreciate that. And I ask that because about the updating, because I know things are changing as we're moving along, but obviously, all of those are critical trainings that, especially individuals in leadership that are going to be supervising others, probably receiving that kind of training. Any other questions before we go on?
I do. So these are optional or are these also required?
These are all optional at this point. The college-directed training is required. These are all optional. We're going to talk about more required stuff in a minute.
And I don't want to interrupt you too long, but do you by any chance know the participation rate in these classes?
I have a slide on all of the participation in a second. Did you have something, Chancellor?
No, my question was similar. What is required? But these are not required.
These are not required. We also have on-demand training, so we were just talking about instructor-led training. And that instructor-led training is either in-person or it's like virtual. We've actually found out the pandemic, we were running a lot of courses in-person, but people were coming from our seven to eight different locations, right? And then it takes you an hour to drive here. The pandemic really allowed us to flip it and still be engaging virtual, and our attendance rate has, has gone up in a lot of these workshops. But some are still better in-person, right? So it just depends on the workshop material that you're looking at. But with on-demand training, we actually have, the college has purchased 40,000-plus courses available online. It is through our precipio platform, which I'm going to show you in a minute. It has compliance and professional development courses in IT, business, leadership, management. There's also certification courses in here that are free to employees for training, and many of them actually include practice tests. And project management is, is one of them. And the great thing, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit. So you all know I was acting in my position before I was full-time, right? Some of you I worked with to hire the chancellor, so you knew that I was in this acting position. So while I was in my acting position, the Director of Organizational Effectiveness and Development was not filled with a full-time person, right? Now that I'm here permanently full-time and I've hired a new director, we have the opportunity to do so many cool things, right, that we're going to dig into now. And one of these is reintroducing the college to all of our self-paced online courses that we have available that people can start consuming now. So this is our precipio platform. You all actually have access to this as well, so we can, we can get you some directions and have you get in here. This is where our 40,000-plus courses are, including online books, tools, and everything else. In here is this certification center. And if you go down here, you can either, guiding you to a certification, or you can be like, no, I really want the certification in project management. So here's PMI, which is a very famous project management certificate, right? Click on it. It's got, you can choose intermediate or beginner, right? So we're going to, going to click on this PMP certification. It's got everything in here. It's got all of these courses that will take you through the whole project management book, right? Then you can take practice exams. All of this is free at the college, right? And then the only thing that's not paid for in here is your actual exam, right? But that's something that you could potentially ask your department for, right? But to take any of those other courses, it costs thousands of dollars. We already own this content and the practice exam. In, in HR, right, we, they actually added to, they actually now have all the stuff for the Society of Human Resource Management informations if people want to get certified in that. There's also Microsoft Office for our IT. There's also the HR certification. There's a Google certification. So all of these also include books behind them. New at our college, lots of times, people are asking about AI or like Isaac said, hey, we're going to give everybody the college Gemini. I don't know how to use Gemini. All you have to do is type Gemini in the search box. Google Gemini comes up, and there is an entire channel that will teach you how to use Google Gemini. All of this in here. The other one Joey was telling me about that people always ask about is Excel. Like, I don't know how to use all the different forms of Excel. Same thing. It's in here. But there's also leadership management courses in here. This is all free to the college. We are going to reintroduce people to this platform because it's gotten better over time, and it's, it's given us even, even more. Any questions about precipio?
I do. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, I was just wondering, as a previous adjunct, I know when you start, there's like a lot of information coming at you. Are new employees, whether they're full-time or part-time aware? Or how do you make them aware of all these resources that, you know?
Yes, so, you know, through the adjunct orientation, which is more of an online self-paced orientation, some of this gets introduced. All adjunct faculty actually have to do college-directed training as well. I was an adjunct once before too, but this, before I was here, right? So there wasn't this, this mandatory training to make sure everybody did it. As well as, you know, we will be having what we're talking about, reintroduction sessions. One of the great opportunities ahead of us is that we do have college-directed training refresher coming up in next year, calendar year 2026. And that's going to give us an opportunity to reintroduce people like, hey, you got to go in there and do this regular training, but at the same time, did you know about all this other amazing stuff? So, yes, they have access to it. Do they use it all the time? No. But will we try to get them to use it more? Mm-hmm.
I just, I think that, and I can't think of the name of the event, and I feel horrible. Pima, not all day. The event at the Tucson Convention Center.
All College Day?
All College Day, yes. I know that it's a fun day, but that would be the perfect place to, like, if I was an employee, I think, I think, and I think Board Member Barasa feels the same way, that I, the excitement of the opportunity that there is, why would we not present something like this at that, at that event? Is, I know it's supposed to be a fun day, but that's motivational speaker at its best right there, that, just the resources. It's impressive.
Yeah, I definitely think we could, right? And again, now that I have a partner, right, to help me do all of this stuff again. Because when I first started, it was really kind of cleaning up, like, the compliance problem, getting things back on track. And now, the other thing is, is this platform has developed, right? It's had, it's had a better place. The other thing I didn't even show you is that it actually has AI simulations, right? Where you can engage, it has coaching your employees, right? It actually has a cybersecurity one for educators, right? Like, ooh, what if I did this? And you can talk to it, and it will respond back to you, right? And you can turn it on to be like, super hard or easy, right? And then you, you can, you can learn along the way. So it has a lot of stuff. There will be email communication and workshops going out to get people re-engaged with this. So here is our historical course attendance, right? In FY23, this was around the time we started to introduce precipio. We had gotten it around FY22, and we started a big marketing campaign for it. So you can see our course attendance is higher, but, you know, in general, we have about 6,452 courses that are being completed. It's, you know, leans more heavily on the online courses, and then ILT is that instructor-led. You know, we're about at 2,000 each year. You can see the course numbers going down in the past two fiscal years, and that is because we weren't doing much advertising, right? So the only people that were going in there knew about the resource already. And that, you know, to be honest, the college's appetite or bandwidth to be able to look at this kind of stuff between HLC, Affirmation of Accreditation, and finding a new chancellor was really low. But now that those two big things have passed, we see this as an opportunity to bring us back to FY23 or FY22 levels on the instructor-led as well as the online courses. There is one note that when we do do the college-directed training refresher, which will happen next year, we usually get 11,352 courses completed because that's like, so, we took those numbers out of FY24 because otherwise it would look really weird. Be like this big spike. So we talked about on-demand, we talked about instructor-led, and then a lot of times what comes up is like, okay, well, what, what if I can't find my thing in on-demand or it's not instructor-led? Are there funds available for external professional development opportunities? And yes, the answer is yes. The first one is, is department travel funds. And I think this is the one that people don't know about very much. So I talked to finance, and we have over $1 million plus allocated through department budgets, right? Specifically for external professional development opportunities. So Human Resources as a department has professional development funds allocated just as any of the other departments here at the college. And I use those funds because my, my people, we need to keep up on the HR topics, right? We need to go to some of those professional conferences, right? So we will send people to the SHRM Regional Conference, right? We just sent two or three people to the conference for our new training and applicant-tracking platform. That all came out of my budget, right? That's part of this $1 million plus allocated through. So when people ask, are, is there money available? Yes. Is it all used every year? No, right? And so there's that, I think what's happening is there's that conversation between potentially the leader of the department and the employees within that department knowing how they can access these funds. Then there are additional funds. So faculty have $1,000 a year allocated to each faculty. They can build that up to a certain amount. And then, you know, they can, they can use that for a professional development opportunity. Now, in addition to that money that's allocated through the departments for staff, and this is the one where sometimes people think it's the only money, the college annually allocates an additional $100,000 for exempt, $100,000 for non-exempt, and then employees from those two pots are eligible to apply for up to $2,500 per fiscal year. Those funds tend to be for stuff that is not required by the department. It's something a little bit outside, right? So say you work in HR, but you eventually maybe want to be an IT professional, right? And you want to go to an IT conference. It's probably not something I have in my budget, right? But here's these extra funds because I want to continue developing, but it's probably not department-based funds, right? That's what those are for, kind of that outside, still external to the college, but not necessarily directly maybe related to you as a professional, but not maybe directly related to your job. And then we have college-wide in-house training funds. We have some that sit in HR. We have some that sit in, in the academic affairs area. These are budgeted funds for external consultants that we can bring in. So in the past, Ron Bell, our project manager, has brought in project management. We've had project management academies. A couple of years ago, we had a Chair Academy, right, for leaders, leaders around the college. These are things that we pay for. So this is an area where we could say, I know Teresa said in one board meeting, could we bring in a speaker, right? Yes, right? We have, we have these funds available where we could, we could do that, that type of training as well. We just have to kind of decide, it's not unlimited, what we want to do for the college and what we want to offer. Any questions?
I, really quickly, these numbers that you're presenting to us have already been appropriated in the 2026 year, right?
Yes, this fiscal year, yes.
How often do those numbers change?
The $100,000 for exempt and non-exempt, I think it went up a couple of years ago. We evaluate it every year to look at, to see if, if we're needing more funds there. The department travel funds are based on what the department needs, right? So they could potentially ask for more funds in that area, or they could reduce if they're like, we haven't used these in a really long time. Like I said, for the department travel funds, only about half gets used every year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. So opportunities for FY26 and beyond, we're working on a college-directed training refresher, which will be released in the spring of this upcoming year. As I said, we have a new director. She's going to launch a Supervisors Foundation Academy, so that'll be brand new. We have been collecting like issues along the way that, you know, we know supervisors typically have. We've been working with AERC, like making a list with them of common struggles that employees have with supervisors or miscommunications. And so we're going to be launching this Supervisor Foundation Academy, which will include some courses that are required, right? So if you're a supervisor, you have to do these certain things. And then, based on what type of supervisor you are, we'll have some optional training as well. We're going to relaunch the precipio platform, which is also known as My Learning Center, right? Really advertise that and get people using all of those wonderful resources that are completely free to them. And then we are looking at trying to plan a staff professional development event or day, which we used to have before the pandemic happened. Chancellor?
Madam Vice Chair, may, if I may? Yeah, and that's what I'm really excited about.
Yeah, and that's what I'm really excited about, is a full day dedicated for staff professional development, right? To kind of set a day aside, to part of promoting those resources, but also saying, hey, we're going to invest time, or you can take a day and do professional development. One thing I think's interesting is, and Tina, maybe you can speak to this, right? In my experience, you know, community colleges, colleges and universities, and many organizations in the private sector, in the public sector, have professional development or professional learning requirements of their staff. Now, we of course have the compliance stuff, but you know, for, for faculty, for staff, for administration, that has never been a, a part of our being, right? Historically, maybe you have a sense of that, General Counsel Sylvan, you know, or has that ever been a conversation? It's not uncommon, but it is never been in place here.
Not from my experience, right? I don't know if anybody else, like I said, we.
Board Member, yeah.
There's certain certifications that I know, like, you know, like, to, some of the HR certifications require those continuing ed credits, right? And we help support those around the college. As a college, I am not sure about that. If we've ever required anything. Nobody's saying anything, so I'm going with no. You know, and, and I say this from the perspective of when I came on, right? People were fighting against even the required compliance training, right? We're beyond that, right? So we do have an opportunity, right, to potentially talk about how else do we motivate people, right, to use our resources and, and to do more professional development training? As part of our performance review process, we do ask staff, and I know faculty talk about this too, to talk about their professional development learning goals. So we do try to promote it, it's just not required.
Thank you.
That's the key difference. All right, I'm going to switch topics unless anybody else has any other questions, but if you remember something, I can always answer it. But I'm going to go to performance management.
I was seeing if there's a hand up. No?
Okay. So I wanted to talk about performance management as a whole, right? Because this is this process, right, of feedback between an employee and their supervisor, and it's related to like, goals, performance, and development, right? Which is why I started with the development piece, right? Because if an employee needs something more, right, they're going to need access to all of that. One of the things that happens along the way is as supervisors are coaching their employees, they will then reach out to the employee relations team or the training team and ask for, hey, I need more training on communication, or my employee needs more training on time management, and we will help provide them with those resources. So performance management really documents this progress, strength, accomplishments, indicates, you know, where good performance is happening or where improvement might be needed, helps identify goals and needed career skills, development, and growth opportunities. So performance management at PCC today, you know, we, we ask supervisors to have regular one-on-one meetings, right? If, if coaching is needed, right, then the supervisor can go to a workshop, or we have processes online, or we have coaching forums. We ask that everybody does yearly goal setting, right? We have chancellor's goals, we have cabinet goals from them. You know, other people make goals, but we also ask them, again, to make those professional development goals, as well as, you know, other goals they think need to be made for that area. There's also corrective action that is part of performance management. We have an entire policy on it, we have a process, right? If we need to help an employee improve their behavior, they're going to go through a corrective action process. And then we also have this yearly performance review or evaluation, and there are four main groups that really go through this, which is staff, faculty, adjunct faculty, and administrators. All right, so performance reviews today are yearly documented performance conversation between the employee and the supervisor. I have capitalized yearly, because I want to talk about how we want to change that in the future, right? Because right now, it's like, one time of year. And right now, for staff, it's occurring right now. So I have like, a bunch of performance reviews I have to finish up. I was thinking about that as I was making this presentation. So the performance review groups that I was talking about, so faculty, which includes instructional and ed support, ed supporter are librarians, they have a spring timeline. It's about to be launched in February, once, once the semester starts. It finishes before the end of the spring semester. Adjunct faculty also have a spring timeline. Staff and administrators are separated right now, but for the past three years, they've actually been one group together. But I'm going to separate them on this slide. So staff, right now, is fall, right? We completed on a calendar year. We may be moving this to a summer timeline. There's been lots of discussion about potentially aligning this more with the fiscal year. And administrators, this year, will be moving to a summer timeline. They're going to be our first group that we're going to take through the new system, because they're a smaller group, they're 40, and it will allow us to use some of the new features that I'll talk about in a minute.
Madam Vice Chair, if I may? Yeah, so one of the things I noticed last year, so I came on board in August, and then in October, it was like, oh, time to evaluate the administrators, which to me didn't make sense along with goals, right? We typically set goals at the end of, the end of the academic year, which would be spring into summer, talk about that, and then set goals that would kick off in August, right? And to me, an evaluation would make sense at the end of that cycle, not in October. So I'm glad to see that we've made this change, because it aligns more with the academic year.
Yeah, and administrators have bounced around. For the past three years, they, we combined them with staff to try to see if we could bring the processes together, right? So we weren't doing all these different evaluation processes. But, you know, it makes sense, what you're talking about with goal setting. With staff, we're going to have to make the decision of whether we want everybody, again, aligned on, on one time of the year, right? Because that would mean then, pretty much, springtime, early summer, the whole college is going through some sort of evaluation process. It depends on how we change it, right? Like I said, one of the things I want to think about is continuous, so it doesn't feel like such a burden at the end of it. And we'll talk about how we think that the system could possibly help reduce some of those burdens. So with staff reviews, and in these numbers, just note that the last three years, 2022, 2023, and 2024, also include administrators. So staff reviews, our yearly form, is on the calendar year, it's a four-year process, you know, set goals, a self-assessment, then a supervisor assessment, and a conversation. Because if you remember in the beginning, performance reviews are a document of a conversation that happens between an employee and supervisor, and we've really tried to promote that. You'll see on this thing that in 2019, they were canceled due to the pandemic, that's why that number's not there. We've had, in, at the end of 2021, we changed the process, we simplified it a little bit more, which is how we then get to this about 97% completion rate, also with constant follow-up, right? Janet's entire team is constantly following up to get the staff to do this. And I'm pointing that out now, because our next slide is going to show different percentages of completion rates. And I, I can't say that constant follow-up is worthwhile permanently, right? Just to have to send a million emails to get somebody to complete a performance evaluation, that's not necess, because then people are not necessarily putting their time and energy into it. So with faculty reviews, they also have a yearly form. It's based on the academic year and the spring. They have a two, two choices, what we call condensed or a full cycle. The full cycle means that they have a teaching observation as part of it. A condensed cycle means they don't have a teaching observation. They have a multi-part process as well. They set goals, they have an assessment, they might have that teaching observation, they include student feedback, the assessment is with themselves and their supervisor, and then they have what they call a conference, which is basically the conversation. You'll see that the faculty performance reviews, and this is a combination of the condensed and full cycle together, because there's, there's two different forms, are about at 75% completion. And again, that is because they have, there's more steps to their process, which I'm going to talk about in a minute. And, you know, like I said, we got the staff ones up because we've been hounding them. So adjunct faculty reviews, also this yearly process, however, they're completely outside of our current system. They're in like, a Word document that's uploaded to a Google form. There's no goal setting, and it's a manual process that limits our data. So I don't really have good data on this one at all. Kate, who's sitting in the back of the room, is very excited about our new system, because we're going to get to add adjunct into the new system, so then we can have data, and we don't have this weird outside process. So issues with performance reviews today, so first of all, it's a cumbersome process in our current system, even with staff ones, right? They, people get lost along the way, and it's only three steps, right? So with faculty, with six steps, of course, they're getting lost along the way. A step is passed back and forth, right, between a supervisor and an employee, right? And if, if somebody misses it or misses the reminder, you don't get another reminder. The step gets lost somewhere in the system. So this is leading to these lower completion numbers. Or if you do want to get completion numbers, you need somebody in the system that's constantly following up to, to push people along to those different steps. Yes.
What would be the example of the six steps?
So it, it starts with goal setting with the faculty, so I'll go back to this other one. Goal setting, right? And then they're doing a self-assessment, then it's passing back to the supervisor. If they have a teaching observation, they're uploading that teaching observation, then there's uploading the student feedback, and then there's a conference, and then there's a sign-off. I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm consolidating. I've seen the whole, the outline of the steps in the system, and I'm like, wow, that's a lot of steps, right? And like I said, we have trouble with staff completing theirs, and it's only three, right? So, and the system is not very user-friendly, the one that we currently have. So our current system also doesn't do 360 reviews. People have asked about that. Our current system just doesn't do it, so we have to do it outside of the system. The other thing is, is that generally, we're only using it once a year to complete the reviews, so people are going in, they're, they're kind of not used to the system, they don't know what's going on, they get lost in it. I mean, I'm constantly fielding emails, and the rest of my team is like, I can't find my performance review again, and I can't find that email where you sent me the link, right? Or where's, where's those directions? And then, as I said, some processes are happening outside the system, like adjunct faculty, so everybody's not, not in the same place. Do you have a question before I talk about the future?
Any questions from you? Board Member Randall, any questions from you? I just want to make sure, you know, we didn't forget about you.
I appreciate that. Nope, I'm, I'm listening, and I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. I have one last quick question. I'm, I really haven't fully developed it, so I apologize, I had a time. The performance reviews that you're getting, so it's a two-point question. You, you said you have some that are at a 97% completion. Is that additional percentage due to the cumbersomeness of the program, the system, or is it just, they did not get completed?
So the 97% completion rate would be because we simplified the process with staff about three years ago, right? We reduced the number of steps. And we put a whole bunch of us on the team to follow up, right? And that, that includes emails, or that includes me talking to my fellow administrators and saying, you have 20 people left who have not done their performance reviews. As well as, when you reduce the number of steps in the system, it means that the employees don't have to go back and forth that many times.
I think your question, though, is around the 3% who don't get it done.
The 3% who don't get it done, so there's a mixture with the 3% that don't get it done. There's, and it's, it's interesting, there's a couple of people that are potentially on corrective action plans, right? So we're, we're having to deal, prioritize like, what we need them to do. We have employees who go on an FMLA in the middle of the process, so it's left, like, the employee might have completed it, or, and then they're not there to actually have the conference. And there are a couple of employees that just don't complete, and then we're having conversations with their supervisors, right? And potentially because they're in a performance corrective action. So we're trying to get everybody to do it. So most of the time, when we're down to that last 10 or 15 people, there's usually some specific reason attached to them, because me and my team have had a conversation with every single one of them.
Okay, thank you. And the last question I have is probably a much more difficult one to answer. How do we use the data analytics from those performance reviews from, from an HR standpoint at your department? How do you use that to implement new expectations, new practices? Obviously, the supervisors that are conducting them can direct modification, or expectations, or goal-setting directly when they're having that conversation of that last step. But how do you, from an HR standpoint, use that data analytics for the performance reviews?
We don't actually a lot right now, because it's not set up in a good way to have a lot of data analytics. So we hope, right, we will use it at certain points if an employee, again, is in a corrective action process, we're hoping that they're using it as another documentation point. But I will tell you that they don't always do that, right? They do their performance reviews separate, and then they tell us they're having an issue with the employee, right? Which, which is a disjointed process. We have like, a Likert scale attached to things, right? So if we wanted to, we could look at an employee and see it, but a lot of times, employees have different supervisors here at the college, right? And we try to get them to rate consistently, but some supervisors say, well, I don't like to rate too low. And I have other supervisors, like, I don't like to rate too high, even though I tell them, this is how you have to rate. So if we wanted to run a report, and we have before, to see, you know, if we have a lot of employees that are down in that, like, what we call the one and two, like, needs improvement, and we don't. And it's either because our supervisors aren't rating them that low, or we just have really great employees.
Yeah, and I guess the question for me was more so because I'm trying to better understand, why do we do these performance reviews? Is it a requirement? Is it just procedural? Is it transactional?
It's part of a requirement, right? It is an expectation, right? Through HLC accreditation, or just any common organization, that you have at least one documented performance review, right? Which is why we're at this point of one documented performance review, which is why I want to change that in the future, because having a mandatory once-a-year conversation is not the best thing, right? So even though staff are at 97% completion rates, I can't tell you that the conversations are better than the faculty at 75% completion rates, right? I can tell you that all of them are having at least one documented conversation at some point during the year, but we have to change that, right? We have to change the culture, right, to have a better performance management process. That is not just a form, as I was talking to some of my colleagues, a checkbox. Like, I'm going to do the checkbox, I'm going to do, I'm going to do the.
Right, and that's what I was getting at. How do we change the culture to go away from this, it's just procedural checkbox? I appreciate that, thank you, Tina.
Yeah, I think that's the exciting part, right, is the opportunity to get better as an organization. And to your point, I don't want to steal your thunder on the future of performance management. But yeah, at a high level, right? We would love a system where we can say, wow, we have too many employees that are lacking in this area, AI, whatever it would be. And then you would say, okay, let's create a professional development structure to help meet that, that need, so, but you could talk about the future.
Yeah, let's talk about the future, and there's, I mean, this is just like, mm, a slice of the future, it can go in a lot of other directions. So first of all, you might have heard us talking about, there's My Career Center, right? We're going to, we're putting a new system be, behind My Career Center right now, we're, we're switching it out. The old system's called Cornerstone. We've gotten continuous complaints on the user and super-user experience, right? It's cumbersome, it's hard to use. To be honest, I mean, I've had to run it a couple of times, so I've had interchanging staff, right? And I'm always like, I, I get, I get lost in it. NeoEd, which is our new system, and it, it's, it's based towards the educational community, right? We'll integrate directly with Banner, which is our system of record, right? Which will help us actually write and pull information back, so the information in NeoEd will be a lot more updated. We are also adding more modules to support the college. So we have to have an applicant-tracking module, right? Because our applicants have to apply somewhere. So that's actually the first module we're doing right now, and we're about to do a switch-out, right? So that people who apply to jobs here at Pima Community College are going to be the first ones to experience the new platform. And we've already tested it out a little bit with faculty and staff, and, and we're getting, we're getting good reviews, right? Because it's a lot easier to use, it's friendlier, it's the new updated look of the system. The other cool thing that we're going to have is something called onboarding. Right now, onboarding a new employee is very disjointed. It includes many, many different Excel and Google spreadsheets, spread out between departments, making sure that different people do things. Onboarding is going to put it all in one place, right? So you could have this checkbox, and we can help a new employee not be confused. I mean, new employees right now are getting 10 emails, potentially from 10 different departments at the college, with all of these things they need to do, right? One place, one system, better experience, hopefully retains our employees better. One of the things that many of our departments are very excited about is e-forms. We can start creating forms to gather data, so our employee service center is looking at this for FMLA right now. They have all these paper forms that somebody has to fill out, and then either drop at the office, or scan in, and send over, or whatever, with this e-form process, they can then track it, and they can pass it along to different people to get approvals. And so this is going to be life-changing for us to get rid of those Google spreadsheets. And then PERFORM is the last piece that we'll be implementing, and administrators will be part of this, this first group. And this is where performance evaluations will, will live. So we're very excited about that. So with the employee groups, in implementing PERFORM, right, our adjunct faculty, we will get rid of the paper, right? We will add them. We will add them into the system, right? So they can have their very own separate process, whatever we need to do. Faculty, right, they are actually going to go through the same process, because they're about to start in two months, right? We're not going to change it on them, so they'll develop a new process in FY '27, right? Once we have the system implemented. Having administrators go through it first will help us, like, figure out, like, what are the best ways to use the system. Same thing with staff. We're going to have to decide if we're going to do that change between calendar year and fiscal year, which might mean that staff get like a five extra month reprieve in having to do performance reviews, so that we can, we can align them up. And then the administrators are getting that five months reprieve right now, right? Because we're switching them over to the summer. So they'll have a new process in summer of 2026. And with that, right, our new system does 360-degree feedback. They call it surveys, right? But we will be able to use it as a developmental tool that provides a comprehensive view of an employee's performance, right? So now, 360s generally gather anonymous feedback from multiple sources, like the manager, direct reports, and colleagues that have frequent interactions. It's not everybody at the college, right? It has to be people, because it's performance review, it has to be people that have direct, regular interactions, so that we can provide a circle of feedback around the employee that the manager can then use to help them in coaching them with their, with their performance. So we're considering adding this to the administrator reviews, because it's been asked, right? And again, they're a smaller group of people that we can, we can try this out on. We started to see this, the survey feature, right? We can figure out what questions we want to ask, we can ask questions that are on a Likert scale, so then we can get data if we wanted to, we can ask open-ended questions, we can assign the people that we're asking it to, we can pick the time of year we're doing it, you know, we can pick how it's going to be summarized, is it going to go to the employee first, or is it going to, you know, anonymously, or is it just going to go to the manager, and then the manager's going to figure out how to do that? So there's a lot of cool features to this. I literally saw them like five days ago, so, learning.
Tina, if we want, if we decide to, right, we're going to add the 360-degree feedback to the administrator performance evaluation, is that any type of administrative procedure change, or board policy change? No, that could, we could just add it.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a process, it's just an option for us in how we gather feedback about somebody's performance.
Good.
So, I will know more soon, but I got a sneak peek at this, because I told him I was giving a presentation, I was like, I have to know what this looks like. So the big thing I've been talking about is, I, we don't really want one-time-a-year feedback, right? We want more of a continuous feedback approach, right? So the system has lots of different options, right? I'm going to summarize it right now, it's check-ins. We already ask people to have check-ins, right? But they tend not to be documented, they tend not to be, you know, on a, on a regular basis, it's kind of however that supervisor wants to do. But, you know, check-ins really do ensure that managers are meeting more frequently with their employees to set goals, measure progress, provide coaching that's more timely, right? Our system allows us to actually document these achievements and areas of concern. On the horizon, in the next six to 12 months, they say that they're going to add an AI feature into this, where then at the end of the year, you can press a button, and it will summarize all of those check-ins in one place. Super excited about that, right? Because instead of have a supervisor having to look at all the things, they can get a summary as they're doing their final documented step, you know, of the performance review. The other thing about this is that, you know, when you're doing that one-time performance review, you're going to have recency bias, right? Because you're only thinking about what's, what's happened in that past couple of weeks, right? So if we can kind of promote these check-ins, you know, maybe the system summarizes it for us, if not, it's still there in the performance review process, they skim, they're like, oh, that's right, I said that amazing thing, and I would have forgotten about that if I hadn't looked back. Or we were working on this, I wonder where, where that piece is. So hopefully, we can, we can do that with more frequent check-ins. And then we can implement, the system will also have us implement performance improvement plans, and being able to electronically document every step of the process. So the great thing about the new system is, right now, we kind of have a one-time assignment thing that goes out in October right now for staff, and February for faculty. The way the system is built is that we can build it for the whole year, right? And so if you're setting your goals, and we're coming to the September board meeting, and we're approving the chancellor's goals, that means that administrators can set their goals in October and put them in the system, so we can set that up. Administrative performance reviews start in August, they get a goal thing that comes up, comes in their email, says, put your goals into the system, right? Because either you have a cabinet goal assigned to you, you have a chancellor's goal you're attached to, or you're creating a goal off of one of those things. You know, from there, six months into the evaluation, we can send a check-in reminder where them and their supervisor needs to meet, and document a little bit of that feedback, create consistent questions, right? Maybe it's three months later, we have one more, and then we start that back-and-forth performance review process, right? Whatever, however we want to evaluate them. But all of it is in one process, we can set up one time, and it has all of these check-in points at, at different times of the year. So I think it's going to be a lot better, and it's going to open us up to being able to do some of the things that we want to do, and not have it be cumbersome. Because it takes a lot of time away from us that we could be doing other things, right? To chase people down, to do their documented once-a-year review. Well, you've asked questions all along the way, but you've got more?
So I've been thinking a lot about this for months and months and months, and two or three days ago, when I went through your PowerPoint, thank you for sending that in advance, I saw some things, I thought, you know what? It's not really 360 evaluation. I, I value 360 evaluation, but I think it's training to make sure that supervisors know how to do that job. So I'm glad that you talked a lot about that, but I have a couple of questions. When, when we hire deans, department chairs, administrators, is it part of their job description that they will take training to learn how to? Because it's different learning it than, than helping somebody acquire those skills. So is that, is that in like, in our administrator or department chair job descriptions, that they need to take these trainings to develop these skills, to help their folks communicate more effectively, get the jobs done more efficiently, those kind of things?
Not right now. So we do have, like, in the employee handbook, we have supervisor expectations, right? It's a policy, it's a guidance document, but that's where the Supervisor Academy is coming from. So around the time of the pandemic, I had this awesome idea, right? That when we were onboarding folks, right, we wanted to add another extra day of supervisor onboarding, so whether you became a supervisor, right? Or you, you know, came to the college and you're a brand-new supervisor, that's what we're going to do, we're going to get back to that, right? We are going to offer that new supervisor training, and that's the required part, right? Everybody's going to have a certain foundation, right? The questions we get in HR a lot, or employees, right, that are confused because their supervisor didn't know what they were talking about, comes down to basic policy understanding, right? Or knowing what the resources are. And that is our number-one thing that has come up that I've heard about in AERC, where people are just like, well, but I don't know where to find that, or my supervisor told me that wasn't possible. And it's because the supervisors weren't trained enough in all of that, so that's why it's a, it's a cabinet goal, you know, and why I got Joey in the background, and she and I are going to be working on that and launching it. The great thing is, is that the employee relations team has already started with some of that, because they saw the need, right? And they were able to kickstart some of those coaching workshops and some of those documentation workshops, so we're going to build off of them. They already have some great workshops, but we need the foundations.
Yeah, that whole policy thing, you know, I mean, I heard it all the time I was teaching, and I'm still hearing it, that, you know, my supervisor just doesn't know policy, and sometimes the employee doesn't know policy either. So if, if both of them don't know policy, you know, we could be doing dangerous things, So currently, what does performance management look like right now at the college? So like when you were saying, those evaluations from faculty point of view, for example. I remember my career center, and I'd put down four goals that I was going to do, and they could be anything, you know, participate on a college committee. I don't know, you know, if, if the things that I put down, they were important to me, right? I wanted to get those things done. But is there like a list of acceptable activities? And if, if we, I think we should have a list like that, but I think it should come from, you know, everybody's voices being put into the pot of good ideas. So anyway, back to that first part, performance management, I mean, what does that look like? Like for, for an administrator, for Jeff Silvan, or for, you know, a high-level administrator?
So with Jeff Silvan, he probably has regular check-ins with his supervisor. I know that there's like one-on-one meetings they have at least every month or two.
Too regular.
Huh?
Too regular.
Okay.
We meet with Jeff too often.
There you go. Well, they're right next, they're right next to each other, so they probably talk all the time.
Do you want to cancel the meeting we have tomorrow morning?
No, no, but we do have one-on-ones.
Yeah, so they have one-on-ones, they have check-ins, they're not, they're not documented at this point, right? But a lot of supervisors, because we do recommend that, it's an expectation that you're regularly meeting, so there you go, Jeff gets to meet with his supervisor. Because the supervisor is the chancellor, right? That he knows what the goals are, that he's expected to be a part of and complete, so that's, that's a lot easier. And then they're talking about any development goals. Right now, right, before we changed the system before this, Jeff would also go into, you know, my career center and put in goals, it might be a repeat of whatever goal he was attached to, and then any professional development goals. His supervisor has access to see those, so they can talk about them and be like, yeah, these are appropriate, or could you, should you change those, right? Our new system will, Jeff sets a goal, and then a notification will go to the supervisor and be like, is this okay, right? And then they can, they can approve and look at them to make sure they're having those conversations. And then the other major point is the yearly performance review. Or if Jeff steps on a line, right, and needs some corrective action.
Just to, if I could add to that for a second, so, and goals kind of flow down, right? So being part of chancellor's cabinet, I get assigned a goal, we have conversations, and I have certain things that, that I'm supposed to accomplish, but they're not all personal to me, right? They're, my area is supposed to achieve certain things, so that flows then into the leads of the different areas that are under the legal umbrella. So when I get my goals, and then with the leads in my team, their goals directly flow out of those plus. So for example, I have the compliance director, or the ERM director in my area, by AP, they have certain responsibilities. So their goals are a combination of what's, what part of the strategic plan or other objectives the chancellor has flowed to me, but again, that's not all personal to me. And then which of those needs to flow to each of them based upon what their responsibilities are, which is a combination of what's in those goals, what are they delegated responsibility for through a college policy or procedure, and kind of what's aligned with their job standard? And then if I can expand on that for a second, more, my department has a budget for training, right? So part of the training, then we also, what, that also flows into professional development. So then we have to have a conversation about, okay, if these are what things you're supposed to be accomplishing, are there professional opportunity, development opportunities or training that you might want or need to be more successful to accomplish those goals? It's a little different in my area, because I have a number of people who have a professional license or a certification of some kind, and so part of the budget gets taken up by, we need to make sure that you're meeting your professional education requirements, or that your certificate is being refreshed on an appropriate level. But, so they're all, I don't know if that helps, but that's how, it's all kind of linked, well, it should all kind of be linked together. I don't know how everyone else does it, but at least in my area, they're all kind of interconnected.
That's one, that's one of the reasons why we're thinking about aligning people back to the fiscal year, right? Because then that linkage could happen better.
Yeah. So I, I liked what you said about, if it's not written and documented, it really didn't happen, right? And so I think that that's one important thing that, for liability reasons too, you know, all of that kind of thing. My, when I left the college, my folder that you guys have somewhere in storage was like three and a half inches thick, and I'm pretty sure that was because there were, you know, evaluations and every EPAR, whatever those things were, I'm sure a copy of that was in there. Okay. So I just, when you were speaking, one question that popped into my mind is, how do we know what's important that we evaluate? And you talked about the Likert scale, and I think that that's okay, but sometimes like for Dr. Nasty's Likert scale, you know, it says, the lowest was not meeting the goals, approaching the goals, exceeding the goal, or meeting the goals, exceeding the goals. To me, you know, any of those would be acceptable of a new employee, except for the, the lowest one. So I don't really think that we need to have, you know, a bell curve of responses. I think the only kind of questions that we should ask are questions that are important, and I'm wondering, how, how, how are those questions put into the evaluation? Like, how, how does all of that happen? Are we buying a product that experts have deemed that this is a good evaluation tool? Or are our employees getting together and saying, hey, these are the things that are important to me and to my department?
So that's the process we're looking at right now, right? So our current staff and administrators were previously included in it. We were evaluating folks based on the college behaviors, their job duties, and their goals, right? And that went through a whole vetting process with, and that's not faculty, right? Because like I said, faculty have about seven or eight different competencies that they're evaluated on, and that also went through a vetting process. As we get this new software, we have the opportunity to look at that again, right? So we will be coming up with ideas and seeing what the, because we can have open-ended questions, we can have Likert questions, we can have yes-or-no questions. We also, within there are basic competencies for most jobs, so we can kind of choose in partnership, right, in collaboration with the employee groups, what, what we're going to do, which is why it's great that, again, we get to experiment with the administrators first, because they're a smaller group.
And then I guess my last statement, it's not a question, it's a comment. You mentioned that, you know, this is cumbersome, and I remember one time when my kids were little, and I was complaining to my sister-in-law, and I said, you know, it takes me an hour and a half to make them brush their teeth, do their chores, take care of their animals, and I said, I can do everything, I could even brush their teeth and get them dressed, I could do it all in 25 minutes. This is, I didn't say cumbersome, I said something else. And she said, Teresa, if parenting isn't taking you energy, effort, and stress, you're most likely not doing it right. And so that, I would, I would, I understand for anybody who has to do evaluations, that it might be a cumbersome, tedious, but I think it's important. And I think that, when, when I was faculty, I would get those evaluations from my students, and this is why I do value 360, because students have a certain perspective about who's above them than the people that are, you know, horizontal or above me. I would always, I would read them all, but I would throw out the very best, and I would throw out the very worst. I would read them and, you know, take them into account, but then I would focus on, you know, everybody else. And I think that it's just really a good growth opportunity to say that, you know, if, if someone, when I think I'm perfect, and I don't grow anymore, I've sort of staled out, and I'm, I'm not going to ever do better. And so the, the idea about this being cumbersome, I think we should look at it as, obviously it is, but it's also an opportunity for great growth. And if we have all of our employees value that process, we'll just be a better college all the way around.
Yeah, and I think that's why we want to make it more continuous throughout the year, right? Because the system is what's making it cumbersome right now, right? And that, only that once a year, right? Because then people are like, I have to really think hard, right? Because I agree with you, when I had student evaluations, it was great, right? I would get all of this feedback that, that I could use to develop myself to be a better instructor in the classroom. So yes, I'm hoping that a more continuous process will also bring up the value of reviews, right? I don't want it to be a checkbox.
Any other questions? All right, Tina, there is none. Tina, thank you so much, we really appreciate, like Board Member L said, we appreciate getting the information ahead of time and being able to review the material to better understand it. Just like you and Chancellor Nasty mentioned it, I'm excited for the future. I am probably the odd man out. I love doing evaluations, because it's the best time for me to be able to showcase and celebrate the great work that was being done. And yeah, there might be some challenges here and there, so I really appreciate that you are creating efficiencies and bringing in a new system to make sure that we are using that data for what it's intended to, right? To create an opportunity for growth. So thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
With all that, meeting adjourned.